Good evening and welcome to your town hall. Having reached the hour of 6:30, I hear a call to order this meeting in the Sarita Town Council and inform everybody that it's being broadcast live. And tonight we'll begin our regular council meeting. After the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll recess the regular meeting to conduct the Rancho Sarita Community Facilities District. Immediately following the CFD meeting, I'll reconvene the regular meeting. Tonight's invocation will be given by Chief Carl Isselhart of the Rural Metro Fire Department. And following the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a big group here today. Jackson Garner, 4th grade student. Cassidy Laguna, 7th grade student. Kelsey Laguna, 4th grade student. Chesney Hayes, a 6th grade student. Aspen Hayes, a 4th grade student. And Candace Hayes, a 1st grade student, all attending Liberty Youth Academy. So we're very excited to have them here this evening. At this time, Chief, if you'll lead us in the invocation.
Shocking. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, to find solutions to problems, and to make the best decisions we can. Help us to embrace our differences and to work collectively towards a common goal. We pray for the health and safety of this community and the many more like it across this great nation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Kids, will you come up to the podium?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, great job. Oh, I didn't even know it was like my bad. Thanks again. I'll hereby suspend our town council meeting and commence with our Rancho Sarita Community Facilities District meeting. Hereby call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, may I have a roll?
Board Member Bracco.
Here.
Board Member Davis.
Yeah.
Board Member Hicks.
Here.
Board Member Lusk.
Here.
Board Member Morales.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Egbert.
Here.
Chairperson Murphy.
Here.
Corn present.
Thank you. Next is call to the public. At this time, any member of the public is invited to address the district board on any issue which on tonight's consent agenda or any issue which the district board can lawfully act upon at a future meeting pursuant to Arizona open meeting laws. The district board may not discuss items, but individual members of the district board may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the district board, may ask staff to review the matter, or may ask the matter to be placed on a future agenda. I don't have any call to the public cards for the Rancho Sarita Community Facilities District. If anybody would like to address the board, this would be the time. Seeing no movement, I will close the call to the public and move to item number four, which is the consent agenda, and entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we move to item number five. Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible action to direct staff to prepare a study of the feasibility and benefits of issuing general obligation bonds to acquire public infrastructure.
Thank you. Mr. Mariotti, our district treasurer, will present this. And Mr. Rossi, on behalf of Rancho Sarita, is here if you want to say a few words or clarify any questions, but this time I'll turn it over to our district treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We recently received an application from the CFD developer that requested that the district would issue general obligation bonds in the amount of $18.158 million for the acquisition of public infrastructure. And the map's a little hard to see up on the screen there. Your handout's going to be a little bit easier for you, but you'll notice that most of the infrastructure that we're talking about in that $18 million issuance would pay for roadways as well as sewer lines. And all of this is located within the CFD boundaries. Most of this infrastructure that we're talking about has already been contemplated within the development agreement. We have nearly $51 million of bonding capacity that's available out of the original $60 million that was authorized back in the 2014 bond election, which took place in August of 2014. But before bonds are issued, the state statutes require that the CFD board cause a study of the feasibility and benefits of the project to be studied and analyzed and a report to be produced and presented in a public meeting. And that's why we're here today, to seek your authorization to move forward with a feasibility report. And if you approve, staff will retain the services of our financial team and bond consultants to go ahead and put that study together for you, and then we would plan to bring that back to you hopefully at our next meeting in January. So with that, if you have any questions, Mr. Rossi representing the developers here to answer any questions you may have and may have a short presentation.
Yep.
I'll turn it over.
Rising to the occasion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Rossi, appearing on behalf of the Rancho Sarita Development Company. And very brief presentation tonight. This is really just kicking off the feasibility study. This is the third one of these you will have done for the Rancho Sarita Community Facilities District. The first bond issuance was approximately 5.5 million. Last one we did, March of 18 months ago, was only 3.75 million, much smaller, right at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. I remember being on the phone with your town council and financial advisors and being asked, are you guys sure you still want to go forward? We said, yeah, we're going to go forward. We'll take the risk. Well, had we known, that issuance should have been double the size it was because the market has just really taken off, especially in the last six or eight months. I had had a number of discussions with your staff, talking about the size of the last issuance, 3.7 million, it's not very efficient. There are a lot of fixed costs in doing these that are the same if you do 3 million or 30 million almost. And at that time, and this was a year ago, I said, yeah, yeah, we'll be in with at least 6 or 8 million. Well, the 6 turned to 12, turned to now 18, and we almost came in at closer to 26, but we couldn't get the engineering done for Region 8. In fact, we were hoping to have this application into you four to six months ago, but the engineers are so backed up, the cost estimates and the other base information your consultants have to have to do the study, we couldn't get done. But we are here now. This is all the remaining Region 7 and Region 9 infrastructure. It's exactly like the prior two issuances. It includes essentially the roads and sewers. And we've already accelerated the construction of part of Rancho Sarita Boulevard, so we bid and are moving to construction on a phase that wasn't even in the last CFD. That'll get reimbursed from this, and we're just excited about it. We haven't seen this level of builder interest, home sales, and pricing since before the Great Recession. We have builders signed up, not closed, but either a letter of intent on every portion of Region 7 and 9, all the way down to the southern end of the project. So trying to move as quickly as we can. The town staff has been outstanding to work with all of them because we've had a lot of activity on the project, and I really want to thank all of them. I won't try to name everyone, but we've had a lot and it's been going great. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counsel, have any big, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Do your cost estimates and planning, not to bring the forward, to bring the future forward too much, but do they account for the Sonoran Corridor, which will be going through about A-9 up there?
The cost estimates don't account for that. We don't even know what's
Understood.
...happen on that, but it's certainly something we're paying a lot of attention to, and I've been involved in the Tier 1 study. Funding is being sought for the Tier 2 study now. Hopefully, I'm not sure the infrastructure bill will be able to fund that project, but progress is being made, and we'll just, with respect to the Rancho project, have to see what develops. It's still many, many, many years down the road.
I sometimes wonder about that, given the amount of money that's being printed. The infrastructure could certainly come much more quickly, especially since this is getting support at a regional level to a fair degree. I'm not worried about A-11, that's for the grandchildren of our grandchildren to worry about. But again, just so that you're in tune with it, because obviously it's going to have a big impact, cutting through that property at some point with your sewers and other things.
And Gil, I just had a meeting, PAG RTA meeting, and we had a presentation on that particular project. They think it'll probably be in three phases, coming from the east to the west, you know, from I-10 to the airport, airport down to Sarita Road. I'm using airport, I'm not saying that's exactly.
Understood.
And then the third phase would be what you're discussing, and the cost estimate today is a billion dollars to do it.
Right.
Never mind, like you said, I-11, what that's going to cost, but just the Sonoran Corridor portion in total is about a billion dollars. So I think it goes to your point on what's in there and how much can one project, you know, get. I think the airport's getting 300 million, and that's a huge win, you know, to get 300 million, never mind a billion, but that's as far as we've been briefed.
No, I'd just like to make sure that we're contemplating because that type of future obstruction going through a major development can be rather upsetting, that's all. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Lusk, I'm, my firm is the lead lobbyists on getting money for that project, so I am intimately familiar with it.
Did I state anything incorrectly?
You did not.
Okay, good.
Now I'm confident that it will be in Phase 3 in no time at all.
Mr. Mayor, one question. I actually have it for staff. Whenever I'm voting to, I know we're not increasing anybody's taxes on this bond or whatever, but we are extending the time that they will be paying for it. What is the process, can you remind me again, is allowing the residents to know that this is coming, that this vote is going to occur? Because I know this affects only a small portion of our residents currently.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that action isn't what we're taking today.
Yes, I know that.
Right now, we're just looking for the authorization to move forward with the feasibility report. So the way the process would work is get the authorization today, come back in January, actually take a look at the results of the feasibility report, you know, which includes all the financing and what have you. And then after that, we would schedule another meeting for a month later in February, and that would be the one, that would be the public hearing and an opportunity for the public to come and give you feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to direct district staff to prepare a feasibility study for the insurance issuance of general obligation bonds to acquire public infrastructure.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Moving forward, thank you. Having no more further business for the CFD, we'll adjourn that, and Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call for our regular meeting?
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Hicks.
Here.
Councilmember Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Vice Mayor Egbert.
Still here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Corn present.
Thank you. Item number five is the approval of the agenda, and just as a caveat, we're approving the agenda as 11, Executive Session 12 continuation, but I have some speaker cards for 12. So before we move to Executive Session, I'm going to allow the speakers to speak. That way we'll have all the information before we go upstairs and then come down and continue the discussion. So with that caveat, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved as amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is call to the public. At this time, any member of the public is invited to address the town council on any issue which is on tonight's consent agenda or any issue which the town council can lawfully act upon at a future meeting pursuant to Arizona open meeting laws. The council may not discuss the items, but individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review the matter, or may ask the matter to be placed on a future agenda. I have a few, but most of them are for item number 12. One is for call to the public. Chris Krieger, if you can. Oh, sure, yeah, 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 go ahead. No problem. Lisa, do you need a card or can you submit on their behalf?
I gave it to her.
Oh, you did?
I checked both boxes.
Oh, you did, okay.
Saving you paper.
That's what confused me. I don't mind using paper, keep track.
Nan Walden.
Dick Walden.
Farmers Investment Company, thank you very much. We just wanted to make a brief introduction to Chris Krieger, who is Chief of Strategy for Global Water Resources Company, an Arizona-based company with significant ties to our local area, and he's going to tell you a little bit about the company, and then I guess there'll be some discussion related to the agenda items you mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, until we get to the turn.
Thank you, Dick and Nan. Like they said, my name is Chris Krieger.
Yep, very good.
How about now?
Yep, good.
Perfect. My name is Chris Krieger. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at Global Water Resources. Thank you for your time this evening. Like Dick and Nan said, we're an Arizona-based water, wastewater, recycled water utility company. Our headquarters is in North Phoenix, and we have a large operations center in Penal County in the city of Maricopa, and we now have an operations center here in the town after our acquisition of Los Quintas Arenas Water Company a few weeks back. To give you a little more detail on our company, we are the only publicly traded, regulated utility that's headquartered in the state of Arizona, which is pretty unique and awesome for our state. Over approximately half our shareholders are actually Arizona residents. Over half of our Board of Directors, including our chairman, are based here in Arizona, and we're really proud that our entire leadership team is also based here in Arizona and part of the communities we serve. We employ over 90 Arizonans in specific disciplines within the water, wastewater, recycled water specialties. So think operators, engineers, water quality compliance, financial and technical expertise like that. We were founded around 2004 on two main principles, water scarcity and regional planning for future infrastructure development. If you're familiar at all with our operations in Penal County, we have done a job in combination with the city there, basically planning its water future in a way that allows it to be the second fastest-growing city in the state. So we take a significant amount of pride in the water resource planning we've done to facilitate that. And then we've also are known for our infrastructure planning and our proactive approach to it. So to give you a little context, the city of Maricopa, back in the year 2000, was 1,000 residents. 10 years later was 40,000. 10 years later now, about 70,000, and a recent article in the paper there projected that there's enough housing that's made through their planning processes to serve 125,000 people in that short period of time. And to be successful in partnering with the city there, we came to a number of key agreements that allows us to really think forward proactively on infrastructure so that when the development comes, we're ready and the community's ready, and it's really been a big win for the city and the larger service area. Our ask tonight is for you to consider pulling item 12 for a couple reasons. First, we want to give our company a chance to show you what we're about and have our CEO, Mr. Ron Fleming, come down and meet you.
You have a few extra seconds because we didn't reset when the Waldens were speaking.
Thank you. Have Mr. Fleming come see you, and then invite the mayor, council, and whatever staff members are appropriate to actually come drive the city and come see our operations center there so you can see what the regional planning looks like, see us up close and personal, and get to learn more about how we've been proactive in planning the water future in the communities we serve. And that'll allow you to evaluate all the different options as you're thinking about your future as a community and hopefully also as an integral partner in that success. Thank you, look forward to speaking to you later.
Thank you. That's all the speakers I had at call to the public. If anybody else would like to speak at this time, this is the time to do so. Seeing no movement, I will declare the call to public closed, and we move on to council and town manager brief summary of events. I think I'm starting from the left side. Mr. Bracco? Nothing, Gil?
As you know, we are putting in that road to finish it over to Walmart, and we're going to do a little bit of an open session on the 13th. That's Thursday, January 13, over at the Quail Creek Clubhouse Ballroom, at which we'll be presenting the plans and some visuals of what that road's going to look like and what it's going to consist of. There have been a lot of questions about that, and we would like to get those answered, and out in the public. They are working at both ends of the road, and they are well on the way to, I think, finishing in calendar year, fiscal, at calendar year 23. And again, that meeting will be open to the public if anybody has interest to sit in on it, and we'll try and make it as productive as we can.
Thank you. Karen?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have to announce this one because this was my dream, my idea. The Winter Festival is coming up this Saturday, starts at 5:00 PM, parades at 6:30. I'm looking at Laura like I'm correct, right? From a historical standpoint, I was the one, I really wanted to have some festive light parade of some sort, something, and we didn't ever have a parade in this community from the town standpoint, and so I reached out to Melissa Hinkle, and the first one we did, it was so small, it was during the day because we were testing out the system and would it work okay, and it has only increased in popularity and in events and activities and such, and so I'm really pleased to make sure the public's aware that this is happening. Pretty sure Santa's going to be there, I'm pretty sure he's going to be high up in a truck from what I understand, but I hope to see the public there, it'll be amazing.
And the mayor will not be in that truck, high up in the air, I'm just saying. Debbie, do you have anything?
Yes, I just, my question is for Nanette, I'm sorry, not for Laura. The lighting at the bus stop parking lot, did we get that situated for Winter Fest? Because I know we had Oktoberfest, the spectacular, the food vendors had a, they didn't have any good lighting, so.
Yeah, we tripled our lighting.
Okay, perfect.
Lots of parking, too.
Lots of parking, yeah, and a new parade route as well.
If you wanted to see the parade route, this is for those of you looking or whatever, you can see it on the map on the town of Sarita. If you look at events and parks and rec, you can see the parade map, so since it has changed.
Yep. Melissa? Yeah, you said no.
I actually just wanted to remind people, this is the season of giving. We're very fortunate to live in a state that doesn't have a lot of natural disasters. I know that there's people in Kentucky who are suffering towns, entire towns.
Right, wiped out.
Nearly wiped out, yeah, including their town hall and churches and everything. So just if you have time to give, please give and, you know, share your resources if you have them, so thinking and keeping all them in their prayers.
Absolutely, thank you. And thinking about keeping people in their prayers, someone I didn't have a long time to serve with, but the mayor of Goodyear, Georgia Lord, passed away yesterday. She was 83, and her journey in Goodyear, I think, is similar to ours because they were known as a bedroom community, and when she came in, she really started the economic development side of that as we've done in the last few years. So I know she did great things for Goodyear, so thanks for, we were passing a sympathy card around, so I appreciate that. And I'm staying in touch with the league, and I'm going to try to attend the services. They're talking probably after the New Year because of the holidays, and it might be a celebration of life, but I'll keep everybody informed on that. And also, since Laura's here, you know, kudos on a great El Tour, Tucson. I was down at Quail Creek, our park down there across from Quail Creek, and lots of people cheering people on, and we were refreshing the riders with water and oranges and bananas, and they had more than they had, we had to go out and get more stuff because it was so participatory, and my actually daughter rode in the 104 mile. I was going to do it, but it was much too easy, so I left it to her to do. Yeah, and thanks to KGVY Radio, they had Laura and I on about a week or so ago, mentioning Winter Fest and promoting it and informing the public, so I think we're going to have a lot of people there, so thanks for joining me on that. And as Melissa said, I just, you know, it's been a tough time, but, you know, wishing everybody a joyous Christmas, Hanukkah, and whatever else that you celebrate. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 24, which is a Monday, and at this time, if we missed anything, Mr. Mariotti, you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to elaborate a little bit more on the Winter Fest.
Okay, go for it.
So there will be ice carving food trucks and last-minute shopping opportunities at this event. There's some key stages to it. The light parade, which we have a lot of participation from this council on the parade, and we're grateful for that, that starts at 6:30, then the tree lighting ceremony at 7:30. Photos with Santa will be from 7:30 to 9:00, so indeed, I think there'll be a Santa sighting, and it won't necessarily be up in a bucket truck, I don't think, the photos will probably be lower to the ground. And then there is a neat laser show scheduled for 8:45, and just want to encourage everybody to stay to the end of that because there'll be a surprise to make it a December to Remember, which is the
And they won't even tell the mayor what that's going to be. I'm really, you know, chagrined.
Then on Saturday, January 8, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM here at the municipal complex will be the one-stop recycle drop event, and that's where the community will have an opportunity to drop off used cooking oil or new cooking oil, old Christmas trees and electronics. A lot of that will get destroyed and some of it will be recycled, of course.
Right, thank you. Next, we move to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved, and we move to item number nine. Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible appointment to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you. And Ms. Rice will recommend Anna Cassidy's appointment to the Board of Appeals. Up and down.
I'm going to bet it were our folks that led the Pledge of Allegiance had anything. Honorable Mayor, Council, I'd like to make a recommendation for vacancy we currently have on our Building Board of Appeals. When we posted our vacancy, an applicant, Mr. Dave Hughes, has responded, and I had the pleasure of getting to speak with him. Mr. Hughes brings 40 years' experience as a professional engineer, and some of the work he did during his career included mechanical design and installation for general contractors and mechanical contractors. He also holds licenses for mechanical plumbing and fire sprinkler systems. He has served on the Building Board of Appeals in Wichita, and for a few of those years, he also chaired that board. So in speaking with Mr. Hughes, I feel that he is experienced and knowledge, would be a great asset and a great fit for this vacant position on our board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move to appoint Dave Hughes as an alternative member of the Board of Appeals to fill the unexpired term ending January 1, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Hughes, if you'd like to stand up, and you don't have to, but if you want to say a few words, you can go there or stand right there, it's totally up to you.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
She, her lovely wife saw the request of the, someplace, so I said, let me stop. King, my lovely wife saw the request of the, of someplace, so I said, may I stop? A lot, a lot of construction through my career, hopefully, and help out the.
Well, we appreciate your willingness because without our volunteers, and it goes across the board on all of our committees and our community as a whole, we would be a lesser town because of that. So we really appreciate your willingness to serve on that. I don't think they need a lot, you know, we try to keep things moving smoothly, but it's good to have professional advice and representation. And we do need that, so thank you.
Have, have you been scheduled for the two-month orientation session? It's hands-on, so you might want to check on that. We're pretty easy on volunteers, really, but there, there are exceptions.
And I appreciate my spouse letting me do all of this, so thank you for allowing him to do all this because it takes that support to allow that to happen. So I appreciate that. Item number 10, Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible approval of contract number 220060, grant agreement with the Sarita Food Bank Incorporated, providing $100,000 of federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds for certain allowable program uses and to amend the GARS fund budget.
Thank you. And Mr. Mariotti, our interim town manager will present, lead the discussion. And I know Penny is here and some others that can also present afterwards. But AC, why don't you kick it off, and we'll go from there?
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So in July of this year, the town was awarded nearly $10.5 million in federal ARPA funding. And ARPA stands for the American Rescue Plan Act. Through our budget and capital improvement planning process, we designated about $7.1 million of that for sewer infrastructure projects, which leaves us with about $3.4 million of our award that hasn't been designated for a purpose yet. So this particular agenda item would take $100,000 of that undesignated portion and pass it through to the Sarita Food Bank. So the Sarita Food Bank would have to use the, the funding for purposes that are allowed by ARPA. And primarily, it's to help meet the increasing service needs of the community in which indeed there has been a lot of additional service needs because of the pandemic, as well as to offset some of the additional pandemic-related costs that the food bank itself has had to incur directly. So we've partnered with the Sarita Food Bank since 2019, 2020. They've expanded quite a bit over the year, over the years. And they really do a good work in our community. And, and not just for food distribution, but also for workforce training and development.
Right.
The Sarita Food Bank has also made a substantial investment in our community by constructing a 14,300 square foot facility that's set to be open hopefully within the next couple months here, a few months. So we're really looking forward to that. I think it'll be a, a great thing for this community once that opens. And I don't want to steal too much of Penny and Carlos's thunder, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to them. And they have a brief presentation to give you.
Thank you.
How are we on height? Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and talk about the excitement that we have about the potential of this grant and this contract, and also to talk a bit about the new building. For those of you who haven't visited, and just before we say anything else, if you would like to come and tour prior to its completion, but it's still pretty special, we would love to have you. So just get in touch with us. My name is Penny Pessell, and I'm president of the board. And I'm joined tonight by Vanessa Valles' husband, also known as our executive director. For those of you who don't know Vanessa, she works here at the town. Carlos and I are going to be speaking about what we are up to. I would like to, though, introduce to you to several people who are here among our team of board members and staff. Jackie Smith is our secretary treasurer, and with her is Steve Smith. Kurt Keim is our vice president and grant writer extraordinaire. Ronnie Singh is our director of our Community Resource Center. And I'll introduce my husband to John Pessell, who's there.
That's right.
And I think I have got everybody. Well, again, thank you for letting us be here. What we'd like to do is share with you the vision and the mission that we have for the work that we're doing. We've had a wonderful opportunity to speak to Mr. Mariotti in detail about what we're doing because, of course, he does extremely good due diligence, as does your attorney. But I think it's important for, for you all to recognize that we are not only a food bank. We respond to that immediate need. We respond to the need for food. It's, it's an acute need in our community. But also, we are dedicated to helping people who choose to advance their careers, who choose to move into the workforce when perhaps in the past they have not been able to do so. And we want to support them with family support, with health and nutrition programs, and with workforce development programs. So that really is our focus from a mission standpoint. You have the, are you, are you doing the controlling? Good. Just a bit of history. We began 12 years ago. And, next slide, please. We began, back, other way.
Four?
Yeah. I'll just, go ahead. Next slide. We began in 2009. We grew from only two families a week. Our, our volunteers were very bored. They read novels. They hoped more people would come. We were asked to open as another doorway to food in this community. Because our community has, has some excellent other food bank resources, but there wasn't enough resource here. So in 12 years, we've grown to serving up to 400 families a week, as we did the week before Thanksgiving this year. And during the pandemic, it was even higher. It was 500 the week before Thanksgiving. And our numbers are actually now above what we were experiencing in 2019 prior to the pandemic. So I think it's important to recognize that the Good Shepherd, which was our incubator, if you will, and the, the area recognized that we really were needed in the community. Next slide, please. And what's, what's really striking here is that for those of us who live in Green Valley, those of us who live in Sarita, ours is a community that by all appearances, if we follow our daily patterns, is a prosperous one. And there may certainly be some people who are living a bit on the edge. But what we have found in the research we've done and in the people that we see is that poverty is masked, and often it's not discerned by those of us who live a normal middle-class life. And it's particularly pressing in that necklace of communities that surrounds the populated areas of Sarita and of Green Valley, places like Helmet Peak, the community of Summit that's south of Raytheon, and has a 95% reduced in free lunch. Within your own district, the Sopori School in Amado has about the same level of reduced in free lunch recipients. And then many other schools are at about, somewhere between the high 20s and 40% reduced in free lunch. So we are an area that has need, and it's really important to recognize that. And I think what's been most reinforcing for us is the community as a whole has really embraced this concept. And that wasn't as true a number of years ago. But there really has been a recognition on the part of the community. Next, please. So I'm going to turn it over to Carlos, who will talk to you about the really exciting things that are going on. We're going to dance a little.
Good evening. Thank you. So the picture that you see on the left, that was the actual distribution.
Closet?
Closet room. Fast forward to a couple of weeks ago, that is the, the new distribution. And I, I know a couple of council members have toured the facility. So those that have not toured, please get ahold of us, and we can give you a personalized tour. But again, to stress, Mr. Mariotti's 14,300 square foot. I actually measured this closet, and it's, it's about 17 square feet. So it's, it's a big difference. So why a new building? The common answer is we're running out of space, but really, it's so that way we could expand our services to our community, our, all of our members in our community. And the pandemic showed us that there was a much greater need that was masked. We had people that were just living at a certain level, and the pandemic hit, and they fell into an area that they were not used to. So we are, we're still going to be a food bank because food is still the basic principle of our, of our everyday lives. But we want to help those that want to make a change in their life with our Community Resource Center. So, go ahead. And that's, go back one. So this is a new entrance to our new facility. I'm quite excited because, you know, it just, it seemed like it was just yesterday, back in February, that these trucks came in, they were moving dirt back and forth, back and forth. And all of our volunteers were telling me, hey, it's been three weeks. When are they going to start doing something besides moving dirt? I said, give it time, give it time. And then last week, they said, you know what? We moved too fast. We're not ready. Don't you remember just earlier this year, you wanted to see this building done? Well, guess what? We will be here probably in the next 45 days. So we're really excited about the next phase in our, in our life here. Go ahead, next slide, please. So some of the food programs, we're going to be expanding our food distribution. Just at the church right now, we're not able to do as much as we've been able to during the pandemic. I, I want to mention that 500 families, that was in one day, and that was nine people. So nine people put together food boxes for 500 families. And that was a tough day. So having our facility, we can streamline and also be open more for our families, our community. One program that I truly enjoy is a backpack program. We have nine active schools in the area, and it's, 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 it's an awesome program because kids who are on free and reduced lunch take a sack of, two breakfast, two lunch, and five snack items for the weekend. And so that goes to all the local area schools. School pantry, we do two school pantries twice a month at Summit V Elementary, and then also at San Javier Mission. And then we also have a home delivery program to Delta Coronado. An exciting piece of, of our organization is the Community Resource Center. So family support, everything from early childhood literacy to even low-income tax prep, we will be offering in our facility. Health and nutrition to stress, not just providing food, but also healthy options. We have a large percentage of clients who have diabetes, so we want to show them and guide them with experts on what they can do. And then also, an exciting piece is the workforce development. So we do have clients that are interested in advancing in their life. So we want to be that stepping stone. And working with partners and collaborate so that way we're not duplicating things in our community, so that way we all share one mission and one vision. Go ahead.
Carlos, haven't you already graduated a couple of people that have already been employed as cooks and?
So I'll, I'll jump right into that picture. So these are actua- these are not pictures that have been pulled on the internet. These are pictures that are on the internet, but these are our pictures. So the picture in the bottom right corner, these are actually two students that, back in August, we started a line and prep training program. And we had 100% graduation rate. So they didn't just graduate, but they also got jobs. So these are two students that are, are being trained by a chef that we have a partnership with. That falls within the workforce development. And also, I want to share that we've formed a partnership with Pima Community College to offer a certified nursing assistant and a certified caregiving program for students who are interested in the community. Go ahead.
The workforce development piece and, and the Community Resource Center is such an important concept, and it's something that has really engaged our funders, the foundations and the individuals have supported us. Because what we're trying to do is match up the needs of our local businesses with the, the opportunities for people to progress. Now granted, these are going to be entry-level positions, but people have to start someplace. You can't go into a higher-level position till you've had a chance to learn some of the basics, say, computer skills or the basic, the basic medical skills. Our hope is that as we work with folks, we won't be able to offer all the programs, but we can refer people and we can still walk alongside them. We can coach them. So one of our commitments is to, when we have a student who comes into us and says, I would like to become a certified nurse assistant, we work with them during that class. And Ronnie is the director of our resource center, and will be, will be organizing that work. But we also then walk alongside them for two years. So that they actually have an opportunity to be encouraged. I mean, sometimes people's energy flags, there may be illnesses, there may be other issues that arise, but to try to help them get the resources so they can continue on that path that they want. What's been particularly exciting is the relationship with Victor Gonzalez and the Economic Development Team here at the town. That has just been wonderful. Victor's a terrific partner. And he, and also Randy Graff at the, at the chamber have been helping us identify employers and what their needs are. And that will continue to be a relationship, an important relationship. So we want to talk just a little bit about how we work because I have to tell you, I've been working for, I think it's about 43 years, so it's quite a long time.
You started at 10.
Pardon?
Just to be clear.
I started at 10, exactly, exactly. And I have to say, this is the most rewarding thing I've ever been involved in. Because of a mission, but also because of the people whom we've been able to work with and been, been able to attract to this endeavor. And it, it's really touching, it's heartwarming, it's fun. We have a wonderful time working together. And it's heavy work. I mean, it's many, many, many challenging situations come into our doors. But it's the camaraderie with staff, which is very, very lean, about three full-time employees, and the rest are volunteers. And in, in the last year, we engaged the equivalent of 11 full-time employees in the form of volunteers, 22,000 hours. That's a lot of folks and a lot of dedication. And since the pandemic, we've been able to bring on board rookies, as we call them, who are just contributing beautifully. We think that for some folks, being very serious and thinking about their future during the pandemic actually helped inspire them to do something that met both a spiritual need and a, and a practical need for being engaged in meaningful work. So that's part of the ethos of this place. And it's particularly heartening that, to find that the town is willing to support an organization that, that operates this way. And, and that we have the encouragement of Mayor Murphy and of Vice Mayor Ed Bird and members of the council. We're just very, very, very pleased about that. So this is an acknowledgement of our most, our largest contributors. Obviously, there are people who contributed at much lesser amounts, who were absolutely as instrumental in moving this project forward. The town is on here, as you could see, in several places. So we want to thank you all for your support in the past, for the support for food, for the employer resource network. And we'd love to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Well, before I turn to my colleagues, one of the things that excited me about this is kind of knowing you and the rest of the team over the years, your number one goal, if it could be achieved, would be to put yourself out of business. And I don't necessarily think always nonprofits, you know, kind of operate in that way. So I've been appreciative of that. If, obviously, in a more dreamy world, we wouldn't need this. But that's why getting people to self-sufficiency, you know, has been so important and why I think it's been a really great relationship.
Well, you know, what's interesting is that we've said to ourselves that it's been really fortuitous in this time of where there are many divisions in our country, that this concept is something that everybody can embrace. No one doesn't want to see people progress. So it's really been exciting to be part of that way of thinking as well.
Thank you. Any question?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I know that when building the building, undo expenses and requirements came, as a lot of projects do. And I, and last time I chatted, you were still shy. What are you up to, even are you still looking for donations?
We're still looking for donations, obviously, but the town has been able to bring forth, we hope, will be very helpful. But we, we need about $500,000 to be able to not only meet the current need to actually get the building done, but to start to repay our construction loan. Because during this time, literally, our expenses doubled.
Yeah.
And there were code requirements. Our water company didn't comply to the code of the town, so we had to build a 75,000-gallon swimming pool, AKA fire suppression tank. So it's, it's been a challenge. And every, I think every capital project that I've been hearing about has had a similar kind of growth in the, in the budget. But we feel very optimistic because people keep coming forward.
Yeah.
That's the most exciting thing. So I think, we feel like it's a shared mission.
Yeah.
I think is the best way of putting it.
So I'm going to put, I know she didn't ask for that, but 500,000, if you have, if you're thinking about how you can give this year, give blood, give to the victims.
Give to Kentucky.
But also consider giving to the food bank.
Thank you.
Any other comments from, AC, do you have any wrap-up comments, or you're good?
Nothing other than staff recommends approval.
Thank you. There are no other comments. I'll entertain a motion. There are no other comments, I'll undertake a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a move to approve contract twenty-two zero zero six zero and to amend the GARS fund budget appropriating a hundred thousand dollars of contingency reserves for use by the Community Services Division.
Some second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you so very much. We will be very committed to fulfilling the terms of the contract.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yes. Next was the executive session, but before we move to that, as I mentioned earlier in the evening, I will allow the speakers that will be on item number twelve to make some comments before we go upstairs, if that's the will of the council. And the first one I have is Dick Walden, unless you already wanted, or had your, that's fine.
I think we're on, oh, you can move it up a little bit, yeah. Luckily, we're both pretty tall.
Mayor and council members, first of all, thank you very much for this opportunity. We have with us several members of the Global Water Resources Company that we understand you are considering a motion to condemn Farmers Water Company or to acquire it, or whatever way, there's a, there's a number of possibilities in your item twelve. We would just ask that you and all the council members consider the opportunity to get to know Global Water Company and its philosophy, its mission, and its capabilities, and its achievements, particularly knowing that it is an Arizona-based company with headquarters in Phoenix and operations center in the town of Maricopa in Pinale County. They own six or seven water companies now in Pima County. This would be in addition to their current portfolio, and we ask that you consider hitting the pause button, that is, the pause button for the town, to give town council members a chance to get to know them. They have suggested to us that they would be happy to have the council visit them over the course of the next some weeks, and we would ask that you consider that tonight.
Thanks, Dick.
I'll just add for a little bit of history, Dick's dad, Keith Walden, founded Farmers Water Company in nineteen fifty-nine. Farmers Investment Company goes back to nineteen thirty-two. We're proud of our record with the community, our customers, our neighbors. However, you know, wisdom is knowing what your strengths are and what are not so much your strengths anymore. And in the current environment, for many reasons, including economies of scale, the regulatory onerous environment, you know, we have come to the conclusion that we need to consider selling Farmers Water Company. And after thoughtful and extensive research and talking to a number of entities, including the town, we've really concluded that Global Water Resources represents some unique expertise of over twenty years, ability, financial strength, commitment to maintain our long-term staff, which have worked for us a long time, and especially an exciting program of innovation and technology and water conservation and resources recycling. So, you know, you still have your prerogative of condemnation, but we ask that you do us the courtesy as longtime, you know, members of this community and large landowners in this community to go up to Maricopa, have a field trip, meet with the staff, talk to them separately without us or without Global, to see what the town manager and the mayor think, and, you know, just take a hard look at it. We really appreciate that, and we think that's the fair thing to do, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, and good evening again. Chris Krieger, Chief Strategy Officer for Global Water Resources, and I want to do a quick introduction of some of my other colleagues that are here. Sitting next to me, who will chat in a second, is Joanne Ellsworth, our Executive Vice President of Corporate Affairs, our Chief Financial Officer, Mike Liebman, and our outside corporate counsel from Snell &amp; Willer, Mr. Mike Donahue. And the element I wanted to flag there is, I talked about the ninety Arizonans that were proud to employ on our team and our entire leadership team being here, but then specifically between Mike, Joanne, and myself, three of the top four people are company, of our company are here. That's how much we wanted to engage in this discussion and, and reiterate the comments from, from Dick and Nan. I'll add one specific piece and then give the mic over to Joanne, and that is thinking about the future and how the town can grow. We've provided you a packet of information, there's a PowerPoint deck with a little more info on us, a fact sheet, and then some common questions. And on the very bottom of the two-pager, you'll see we, in writing, extend that offer to bring the mayor, council, and whatever staff members to the city so we can show you what we're all about. But the piece I'll hit on is five hundred square miles of territory in this state that we serve today in the fastest-growing communities in different places. It's an expertise that's in our wheelhouse and very different than many others in the space, and it's something we take a lot of pride in, to be able to balance achieving the growth the community's looking for, but doing it in a responsible way for the water resources there. And from our perspective, coming, learning about that, and realizing the town can have all that benefits with us owning the water company at no cost to the town, makes a lot of sense. With that, I'll flip it over to Joanne Ellsworth.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you again for allowing the opportunity to address you tonight. You've heard Chris talk a little bit about who we are, headquartered in Arizona, employ local people. I want to tell you a little bit more about what we do. So really, our goal in the communities where we own and operate water utilities is to partner with the community. Your success is our success, and we know that it's vital that we have a strong working relationship with the local government. One of the ways we have done that is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with communities that we serve. That sets forth our key commitments to the community, communication with each other, regular meetings with each other, staying on track to achieve the same goals, and importantly, to stay in front of growth. We manage water resources for the long-term sustainability of our company and the community. That is essential, it is one of our founding principles. If you are going to provide water in the desert, it is...
Continue, you didn't get a reset.
Thank you.
I'm watching.
It is complicated, and it is essential that you manage appropriately the water resources so that areas can continue to grow. We utilize our engineering, permitting, and construction people who are in-house managing those projects, designing those projects, to plan regional infrastructure. So when we say that we're going to serve an area, we're putting in water mains that are sized to serve the eventual total demand for that area. We are not piecemealing it, if you will, which some utility companies do, simply because they have restraints on their capital. As a publicly traded company, we have access to capital, we have a strong balance sheet, we have the ability to serve this community for the long term. We operate our utilities safely, effectively, cost efficiently. The seventeen utilities that we currently own and operate, we've not had any significant environmental compliance violations for over five years. And that's an achievement when you consider the level of regulation that drinking water utilities have to comply with. We care about our employees, we care about our customers. You had a wonderful presentation this evening about your local community food bank. At Global Water, we maintain a customer assistance program. In 2020, we gave over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to customers in need of assistance with paying their utility bills. We also supported the local food banks in the communities where we serve. We think that is important to be an integral member of the community. Our ask is simple. We want a little of your time so you can come, see our facilities, see how we operate, talk to the communities that we work with, and understand how they view us and how we are a good, successful partner with them. And we're just asking for that opportunity to convince you, the same way we have convinced Farmers Water Company, that we are a good, long-term partner for the strategic growth of this area and to serve existing customers with quality water service, as well as planning for the future. That's our ask. We certainly are available to answer any questions that you may have of us, and again, we appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Well, at this time, as it states on the agenda, I undertake a motion to commence to executive session for the purpose of stated on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we do that, may I make one comment?
Sure.
I appreciate it very much, Nan and Dick, you're coming over and presenting tonight in the way you did, and your long-term management of that company. Whatever happens to it, we want it to happen in the best possible way, because the future of Solerita is east of your orchards, and that is a very significant role in the future. We, we always talk about the future, but the future comes a heck of a lot faster than a lot of people realize. But again, thank you for your presentation tonight and for being here, we appreciate that.
Thanks. undertake a motion to move to executive session?
Someone.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to move to executive session. I don't know how long the conversation will go, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome not to, but certainly, we haven't adjourned the meeting, so you're welcome to stay. And if you need to take a bathroom break or whatever, if you need to take a bathroom break. What's that?
Rockwell yelled at a glass type for not burning.
Well, that's why I'm the mayor. I get...
Oh, geez.
Oh, geez.
We're going to worship.
Yeah, I know you have yours.
Well, now that I'm the worshiper.
Are we speaking about the after meeting? It's been two days.
Wait a minute for Bill. So, for the record, how this town town clerk for backing session, record session, and at this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
For our next motion, I'd just like to make a comment. Obviously, this is a very convoluted subject. A lot of issues involved, a lot of money involved. And I think, obviously, there's only seven of us here, but I think it'd be a good idea to put it forward to the residents of the town to make this decision as we're aware. Order is a critical component moving forward. And so with that, I'd like to move to adopt resolution, amended resolution 2021-0689.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any close? Motion carries, and having no further business of the public, were adjourned.